They had.
Right.
And just.
What he recommended. Right. Thank you.
And I want to.
That's why we don't have.
First of all, so I.
Doesn't need.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's it. That's not a big target, sir.
At least we made them time try this. I'll be no question.
Change.
We were.
Thank you.
So you're after. We want to. We should be.
Here's the right thing.
Maybe to other today.
Yeah, obviously, it's not even. Yeah, those. Pushing on. Two batteries.
I can do that.
Just like. It's running.
It's not.
How we're saying.
Okay. Actually, I mean, I don't know. It's the same.
All right, so join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Very.
I mean, I.
He knows.
I mean, that.
Give us.
Give me just a second.
There's your.
While they're getting that ready, guys, reminder. Uh, we're using a different system today. I think the microphone's on the app, right?
It is.
So just, uh, speak up.
The owl's little box. The. The microphone. Pretty good, right?
You know, it's still, they're still on for recording, but.
Yeah, does anybody else have YouTube on their phone? Mine's just showing a black box, but it acts like it's not loading. It may be our Wi-Fi.
Yeah, we're good.
It's good. But it acts like it's. Got it. It's our Wi-Fi. Go, I'm sorry.
We'll call meeting order begin with the approval of July eighth minutes. Uh, actually, before we do that, I have one agenda, the initial agenda item.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like a motion to add item H to new business, and that's the amendment for the rise peer recovery agreement. Have a motion by Jeff to add the amendment. The agenda is their second.
A second.
Seconded by Eric. All in favor of the amendment? I, motion carries seven oh, and, uh, agenda standard amended. Go to the, uh, approve, uh, approval minutes for July eighth. Do I have a motion?
Well, then.
Max moves approval. Is there a second? Willis seconds. All favored. I, seven oh, motion passes. Moving on to the amended agreement to pause under oval business. Uh, Christie, do you want to share anything? I think we're ready for, potentially ready for action.
No, so the only thing that changed from the last time was just that we added a section in case the animal was oppressive, that it could still be taken down there. Um, it just may have to be contained separately. Um, and then we will have to make arrangements if the animal has to be put down. So not necessarily that we have to transport or anything, but we will have to make the arrangements because pause is not allowed to. So that's the only section. It was that one section that we changed.
Sure.
I have a question. Reynolds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just once I get out there, I told this to Commissioner Swift. We have no means of doing transport whatsoever. Or again. We have one cane on everyone, and we don't want to put a aggressive stick in when that cage. Uh, therefore, we have no ways of doing that. Um, I don't know who would reach out to who, who you want to reach out from the Sheriff's Department. Do you try to make contact with other shelters that are, and then? I don't understand why that's a sheriff's position to do that.
Well, I asked, I did ask Val and after JK and I talked after that meeting, I sent out an email and asked Val and the commissioners. They didn't, since it was just make arrangements, they didn't feel like it, we needed to change the, that we would just do it on a case by case basis, that we didn't. The agreement. Just because it, it just says make arrangements. It doesn't say that it would be us, but doing the transport. But that would be on, like, if we had a case like that, there will be, there will have to be transport that pause will not do. And that obviously if JK and them can't do it, we will have to set up for another shelter to come get them. Of that to come, something. Yeah.
Yeah.
Once it went, let's just say, I don't know what's.
By county law enforcement will arrange transportation with them, no kind of facility. So that part needs to be, they're now very good. Like, yeah. Something bad, don't believe the rest.
I don't know. Val and the commissioners didn't want it. They didn't feel the need to change. So that will be something that would have to be addressed.
Our party unit is, is the dollars.
Yes.
So, uh, and the dollars were at, uh, the sum of forty-five thousand. I understand Sheriff's point. This agreement still has a blank in it to, uh, said some to be paid by.
I didn't know when it was going to get signed, so I didn't put a date.
What we're going to. Quarterly.
Yeah, but I mean, it's been going on for months, so I didn't know what. I didn't know when to put that starting date. So if you guys would like to set that starting date.
Not that. Number one, I just listed contracts, agreements, everything. It's all about the word. So the county's job is to distribute, um, that sum of money. I would change that to the county agrees to, then at the end, possible changes after being reviewed each year.
Where, where are you suggesting Travis?
Number one.
Point one.
You see. Yeah.
I should say four and five for the year, uh. Boom.
It does say the agreement shall be effective from the first day of September twenty-five until the first day of September twenty-six, the very last. So there's a, there is an end date on, like, on the agreement. Are you making a motion to amend anything, Travis?
Yeah, I would. Time to time, those are a agreement or a contract, or, like, I said, your herb is very important, or, like, it leaves it with. That, and that kind of law enforcement, and that, and that case called out, or that all should not lose his decision. Have those dues or authority. There's probably shouldn't. Congress should, so.
Pause can't, by their IC code, they, or the statute, sorry, not IC code, but by their bylaws, they cannot be a party, the way I understood it. That's right. They can't be a party to it, um, the way I understood it. And if you guys want to table it and amend it, but I'll have to take it back to the commissioners because they, them and Val have okayed this.
That's what I'm. That's not, rather than us pick this part, I think we ought to send it back. Send it back to Val with your concerns and ask them to either edit it or to come to us and talk this.
Okay.
So, would you go motion table?
It's. Yeah.
And so there's a motion made. Uh, table, uh, like Travis seconded by Max. Any further discussion on the motion? And JK, if you want to be part of that conversation, it would be probably helpful. All right, uh, all favored, motion table. All right. Those. Did you vote?
In the. Although the.
Okay, seven oh. And also state town, how to win money. Say. Can you, is your Greg Christie?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, next is, uh, the corner position, Dick. Thank you. Last meeting we talked about, uh, isn't wanting to add additional deputy and change their pay rates. So he was going to check on training and the list. Minutemed.
That's fine. It looks, you know, he is someone. The request will be on the.
Uh, motion table. Travis moves second. Is there, or Matt, Travis moves is her second. All right, Eric. Seconds, motion. Officially say. Action.
Yes.
I think the motion should, I think the motion should be to, uh, rescind was, uh, approved the last meeting and to now officially approve it at this meeting based on the change of the proper advertisement. So is there any questions for Angie? We, we heard the presentation in the, in her last meeting.
All right.
So Eric moves, uh, motion to, uh, rescind the action at the, uh, July meeting and to approve at the August twelfth meeting. Is there a second to Eric's motion?
Second.
Second, uh, Jeff Harding, I recognize Jeff's first, so, uh, moved by Eric, seconded by Jeff, all in favor of your motion. I, I. Those, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Angie.
All right, thank you.
Jill Hyman's with us from the, uh, uh, Chamber Commerce and wants to talk about tourism.
Um, don't worry, these are thick packets, but I will not be going through all of them. We focus on the first couple pages, but hopefully we'll answer any questions. We'll have the answers in the rest of them.
I need to give one to the.
All right. Thank you for taking time to hear me out today. Um, I am here to propose.
We'll have.
Sorry. I'm here to propose, uh, the creation of an innkeeper's tax, um, in our county. First off, I want to make sure everyone is clear, and innkeeper's tax is not a tax on our residents. It's a tax that, um, visitors pay when they come to our lodging locations. So like our Airbnbs, bed and breakfast, that does not include camping, so it does not impact our parks unless they would have cabins. So, and in fact, our residents are already paying this tax when they go to other counties. Uh, you know, they're already paying it when they travel outside because on the very first page, I will have you turn to that page. This is the picture of the state. Everyone in red is a five percent. Only that do not have an innkeeper's tax are the ones in gray. I know it's a little blurry. We are the only one in Southern Indiana that doesn't have an innkeeper's tax. So, um, and all the red are the standard five percent. But, so why I think we should move forward with this is even though the revenues will be small to start, I, uh, project an eighty-five hundred annual, um, innkeeper's tax for the short-term rentals like our Airbnbs that we have in our county. I think we need to focus on the future opportunities that this could bring to us. Um, like the Old Ben Adventure Park, that they are, their short-term, um, projections are they're going to hope to have four to six cabins. That would be seventy-five hundred dollars to our county. Uh, their long term is forty to sixty cabins in our county, which could be, oh, over sixty thousand dollars a year. And even if, like, we had a, someone renovated the guest house hotel, uh, that back online, it could contribute eleven thousand. And a modest development, hotel development of sixty host rooms could generate well over sixty thousand a year. And while I'm on the hotel development, um, one of the things I learned was at the Tourism Academy, Tourism Conference, was that hotel developers do often, um, pre- prioritize their communities based on innkeeper's tax. They, and if you look at it, everyone around us has innkeeper's tax. They're invested in tourism and we're not. So one of the things, if one of the players, if we want to be in that market, we need to, um, start working on our tourism.
Sure.
Yes.
Sure. What you, what you're saying is perspective.
Yes.
Developers.
Prefer.
This, so they know we're vested in.
Absolutely.
Communicating.
Yes.
Want tourists.
Yes, they want, um, hotel development change like that would want to have innkeeper's tax in place so they know we're invested as accounting. Uh, uh, that's more of the whys. Now the how, the process to, um, great innkeeper's tax, the county council would pass an ordinance to begin the collection of innkeeper's tax. The county commissioners then pass an ordinance to create a tourism commission. The tourism commission would then have the sole authority to allocate the funds, uh, collected through the innkeeper's tax, ensuring that the dollars are spent on tourism development or tourism promotion. Um, on the back of these packets, I have drafts of, um, ordinance and they're, I consulted with, um, local tourism experts. And since there are a bunch of us around us that have innkeeper's tax, I've been able to go through counties with best practices and, uh, come up with the, um, the ordinances for both the innkeepers and commission. Uh, but of course, they would have to be finalized through a attorney. Um, as far as the collection and structure of organization, um, legislation to collect. I would suggest the, the uniform legislation, sixty-one counties in the state have adopted the uniform legislation. Um, it, it's provided by the state and it makes the process more streamlined. And the tax to be collected at a state level instead of a local level, you can collect it either place, at state and local, but given the fact that the majority of our, um, lodging right here is Airbnb. Uh, I would recommend the state level because those platforms are already set up to remit those taxes to the Indiana Department of Revenue. So those will already go there anyway. And it also reduces administrative burden on our local government. Um, in terms of structure, you can have it, um, set up two different ways, through a commission only or partnered with a nonprofit. Uh, I recommend that we align with the, the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is well positioned to take this. We've already members of the Indiana Tourism Association, members of the Southern Indiana Regional Marketing Poolop, and I'm currently participating in the Indiana Tourism Academy, gaining professional development and, um, best practices.
Jill, can you pitch this to the existing Airbnbs and to Old Ben?
I've already put, I've already pitched it to Old Ben. Old Ben is completely on board with it. I have not, um, pitched it to all the Airbnbs because you have to kind of dig through and find the, each person. I've talked to a couple of them. Like Old Ben Adventure Park is perfectly fine. He was used to, um, having the, uh, when he had the one up in Dublinstone, up in Bloomington, their cabins were already, um, had the innkeeper's tax. He actually promoted it. He would, he's, he's came to some of my meetings with, about tourism, wanting to, guess he understands that those dollars will filter through back into promoting them.
So the one thing to note, Randy, is this isn't an expense to them. Um, it's a, it's an expense to the customer.
Yes, it goes on top of.
And they just collect it kind of like a state cell stack.
Yes.
They, uh.
Yes.
Very similar, so.
Yes, and I just want to make sure it's not a burden to our taxpayers at all. This is a strategic investment tool that every, that, not everyone, the majority of the state is already has access to and that we don't have access to, and it'll help market our community effectively. And, um, support local events and attractions, support tourism, create new opportunities and revenue for our small businesses. Um, if you.
Also point out that
Yes.
Current amount that, that the council gives the chamber to support due to commissioners' budget is very small.
Yes.
And at a time where we're being asked to do more with less, it's going to hopefully alleviate, it would hopefully alleviate the ask the more, the
Yes.
The request for more resources from tax dollars.
Absolutely.
Could.
This is to help.
Over to.
Ramp us up so that those will take us back down. So yes, we, um, in the past few years, you guys have paid more to the chamber, but it wasn't because of, like, the chamber was struggling. It's because the chamber was investing in tourism. Before, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars, and then we upped it to six thousand so that I could go to some conferences, um, get education, and now I'm, uh, in the Tourism Academy, learning a, a ton. And, and you know, I also will be, in this packet is also the budget to keep it in one place, the budget rec, as well, that you'll be hearing from me again in an hour.
But given our, our long agenda today, I, I, this is kind of the first public foray of this. I guess I'd just ask if anyone has, and, I mean, do you have anything else that you need to share?
I, I do have, if you have any questions about other counties, uh, Sherry Sherman here, she's with the work county. They are the most recent county around us. They, um, established it in two thousand seventeen. If you have any questions, uh, that come right to your head, she's in the audience and can help us if you would like, but that's it.
Well, welcome. Thank you, uh. Thank you for.
She's in my boat too. She's also a chamber and also visit work, but they're actually to the point now that they're going to separate that out.
Any other questions, Jill? So Jill, I think the, the plan today is that we can just add this to the agenda next time for further discussion.
Okay.
All right, so.
Yes.
Is your phone number on here in case anybody has questions for you?
Uh, it.
It should be.
It should be. I think it's on.
Or you can.
It's not.
I didn't see it, so.
It's not. I'm just keeping that in technito, uh, but no, I will. I can get.
Just to share to us individually. Your screenings, you may not want to.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jill. Uh, Darren Hubbell. Darren, so you come in.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I'll have flyers that I can leave in the back for everyone rather than taking your time to disturb with them right now. Hi, my name is Darren Hubbell, and, uh, I work with the, um, Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster and Recovery and Resilience. That's a mouthful. However, um, what we do is we, uh, respond to natural disaster. Flooding in this area and a few counties surrounding you and your county, um, the governor had called upon, uh, for a state disaster for flooding. Dates were, um, June twenty-eight to July second. And, uh, with that, with those dates, we responded to this natural disaster, what we do. So, um, the opportunity is for folks to get low-interest loans from the government. This is your government tax money coming back to your community in order to support the people who may be survivors of natural disaster for their properties or businesses. The, um, businesses could receive up to two million dollars in a loan. Um, depending on the size of the employer, homeowners could get five hundred thousand dollars, depending on their property and, uh, the damage sustained. Homeowners and renters could get up to a hundred thousand dollars for their personal property. Um, and nonprofits, agriculture, um, and other entities are also included in the ability to get a loan through the SBA for natural disaster recovery. The loans are as low as three percent currently, and, um, I don't know where you can find something like that anywhere else. Uh, the big benefit is, is that it's a year for zero, zero dollars and zero interest. So you don't accrue interest nor do you pay on the loan for the first year. Um, with that, it allows somebody to, uh, have the time while they're rebuilding to, uh, seek, uh, other federal programs, um, FEMA grants, other grants, or insurance companies. As we all know, insurance and FEMA and these other programs, sometimes they're a little on the iffy side, and it takes a while to work out some of the details. So with these, um, a person can get started, rebuild their, their livelihood, um, and their homes while they're working all of that out. Once complete, once they get some sort of payout, they could, can pay off this note, or they could carry it if they wish, but, um, the, uh, the qualifications for this is very limited in the fact that it's, uh, generated to be for everyone that may have sustained disaster. And some of the limitations are simply the ability to repay a loan. You have to show that you could repay a loan if you took it. And then the second part is, is that you can't have a, a current loan with the government in any kind of default status. And so, um, that would include other SBA loans, uh, student loans, et cetera. And so, um, basically it's, you know, if it's a sound investment and people have, uh, the ability to repay, they're highly considered for these loans. And then everything else is, you know, detailed based on that person's, uh, personal situation. Um, currently, the, uh, this, this declaration of disaster runs until September twenty-six for homeowners and businesses and renters. Um, whereas the idle loans, which is economic and industry development loans, um, are guaranteed until, uh, next April of twenty twenty-six. Why does that matter? Well, farmers and other businesses, they don't know their total loss until the end of the year. You, you know, you bring in the crop and you realize what you've lost in that flood. Um, everything else up to that point's estimate, you know? So, how, how is this done? Well, um, like I said, this is your tax money coming back to you. Um, why is it done? Because of the fact that government realizes that, uh, areas that are small in nature, um, even large areas can be economically disadvantaged through disaster. Take a small town, one or two employees or employers, and, uh, they employ the majority of the towns, folks. They get hit with a natural disaster and pack it up, pack it in. They leave, go somewhere else to do their business. Um, it's not just their business that's affected. It's everyone in the entire town, including the town itself. And so for, uh, good governan, good governance, you know, keeping the economy strong in any area is important. And so we've seen in lots of areas that have been hit with different kinds of natural disaster and/or economic disaster, how it kind of crumbles and deteriorates. So, um, with that, this, uh, these loans are out there for anyone to, uh, gravitate towards. A couple easy ways you can get ahold of them, which is sba.gov forward slash disaster. That's easy enough. Or the one eight hundred number, which is one eight hundred six, uh, five nine two nine five five. And so with that, then they, uh, they're, um, they're twenty-four seven to help people get through application. Um, the application is good for sixty days after being accepted. And you don't have to take it right away. You don't have to take it at all if you found a way to, to fix your situation. So, um, we're in the area, um, we're dealing with, uh, folk, you know, uh, every day out there who's been affected negatively by disaster. And so I wanted to bring that to your council and so everyone has, uh, that bit of information. I'll leave these flyers in the back for anyone who's
Very much.
Interested in taking. Any questions that I can answer?
All right, thank you, dude.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, we're going to move on to, uh, Sheriff.
Um, so like, I talked to Eric about this a while back, um, without going into a lot of details. Um, we have to replace a lot of our holistic panels um, for our deputies and myself and Chief Kethley. Um, we had a, we had an individual founder office, uh, works for a company that's willing to donate that money um, to replace them. That's something that if we don't get them replaced by donations, then I'll have to come to the council and ask for appropriations. And so we, we got some donation money together. Um.
The donation is secured.
What's that?
The donation is, is secured.
Yes, pretty much. Yes, pretty much secured, yes. Yeah, um, we just need to set up a, do a resolution for the um, set up a timeline. Um, so we can put that money in when it comes.
I think some of our pre uh. Meeting discussions on this, we got all the sheriff donations has gotten, has to have been like very specific and the funds have been very specific. So the idea was to create a general donation.
General donation.
Just for.
Yeah. I mean, we got, we got guys out there trying to, you know, they're trying to go out and get instead of asking council, we're trying to, trying to wrap up money with with different places, so. Um, but we didn't, we don't have a place to put it, so we need to do a resolution for that fund and.
Okay, and Judy's put that in here as resolution twenty five dash eighteen. That's all I think you really need today, right?
Yes, on that, yes.
So you have most, you have the resolution in the package, um, is there a, is there a motion?
Motion.
Back move to approve resolution twenty five dash eighteen, which is a resolution establishing fund forty one oh six sheriff donation fund. Is there a second? Second of my grade, all favor? Alright, motion carries seven oh.
Thank you.
But I mentioned, um, Sheriff, we will need to appropriate that money.
Yes, what? Yeah.
Yeah, appropriate, there's definitely.
Right. But I had the appropriated over.
Yes.
I think we'll be seeing Jason again real soon. Local option wheel tax, uh surtax, just wanted to have a discussion about this. Uh, we're up to a deadline on whether or not we we move to adopt. And personally, gentlemen, um, uh some of my offline conversations with you, um, we know we need to. Um, states kind of put this in our hands. Uh, if we do not. Uh, we're going to be potentially excluded from some of the community crossings dollars that we are very used to and have done great work in this this county. Um. We're still eligible, but the but the program changes and it changes drastically. Uh, at the same time, I don't want to adopt a tax just to adopt the tax without having some science behind what those numbers are. Um, we would have to adopt this by the end of this month. To get revenue next, next calendar year. Uh, but the real deadline we have is for the next calendar year, uh twenty twenty, it has to be. To to be able to participate in the new community crossings program. Uh, we actually have another twelve months after this calendar year to to get, make sure everything's the way it needs to be. Um, I'm going to suggest that we not take a quick reaction to this. Uh, I talked to Josh Bird, he's put together a bridge plan. Uh, to show some of the expenses on the bridges over the next ten years. Um, with in addition to that, I think we need to engage commissioners on what they're looking at as far as road projects, like we've experienced with the county road. Uh, three hundred north and and those expenses that are still hanging out there. And and put some real science behind this, the, so we know what we're, what we're asking for. Um. And uh if we don't have that done before. Um, this December, that's fine for me. Uh, I think we can, I think we can get this uh. Uh, I think we can get it, we can get to a number this year, but we're just foregoing revenue until twenty twenty seven. Which is a benefit to our taxpayers and it's still gonna keep us. Moving in the right direction. So that's my thought. Greg, do you have any comments on the on the wheel tax as as the changes?
It just, I I do agree that you ought to take your time and do it right and get the right number. Because if now, if you wait too long, obviously there's other things that will be changing. You know, like the lift rates and things like that. So so you want to be gradual, you want to be gradualism, have gradualism kind of play in. To what you're doing and this is one way you could do that in twenty seven, so to speak, and then move on to twenty eight. So, you know, so I I I agree for where you're looking, what you're looking at.
I know a lot of communities have rushed to adopt it.
Yeah, and you you know, and be it good, be it bad, you you know, it's important, there's no doubt. You know, the state legislature says we will not give you money unless you use the tools that you already have. This has been a tool that's been in place for twenty years.
With my understanding, Greg, uh. The loss of, the potential loss of revenue from state by not adopting one. Um, is that doesn't vary with the rate of wheel tax put on?
Not though.
Whether it's a high rate or a low rate, we're not gonna lose red.
Correct, Greg, with the assumption that we're here at August twelfth. And nothing changes. So, you're right.
Okay, under current, that's you right.
Yeah, uh, we stay as of today.
That was my understanding. I just wanted to clarify.
Uh, once this is enacted, can it, that that certain period of time have been been visited in two years modified or?
My understanding is until the council would take action to change.
Yeah, I mean, I've had people phase it in for a period of time and, you know, there's lots of options.
From what I gather in the video works out, is that the part of decision making is. Charge a flat mount per vehicle or based on the value of the vehicle, kind of like our excise taxes right now. You've got a rolling pit on it so much or you've got a Cadillac. So there's a lot of variable things that I agree these are right, take our time.
So, any other, any other questions or comments on this? I just wanted to address it today because of the timeliness and we knew there was this potential deadline for. For a twenty twenty seven revenue, you know, that we had to address, but I just, I'm not comfortable moving forward with it to rushing. This, Greg, we're on that. Um, so how do we move forward? I I think this next, the next piece of this. Is, you know, I think we ought to put together one of our working groups, you know, three members to to work on it. Worth of Josh and Melanie to get these commissioners to get numbers together. And also to evaluate the the ins and outs of what we think the right should be and how we should adopt it, have that heard work on it and then. Uh, bring it back to, bring it back to council when when we're ready. Um. Do I have anybody that wants to volunteer to be part of that discussion? Jeff would appreciate it. Anyone else? Anyone, anyone? Max, would you be willing to surge?
Yeah.
Alright, well, I saw they had examined it. It's figured. Alright, so I'm gonna appoint that as the working group, subject change, uh, see if everyone's schedules align, we'll start, we'll start that process. Alright. Uh, anything else on wheel tax or tax? Moving on, uh, uh, budget twenty twenty six, I think we can postpone this until the start of the next meeting. That's kind of where we are, but do you have anything to mention in this meeting?
By statute.
Oh.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, so we had to put on the agenda today. Are there any units of of government that are here today? Uh, for the regular council meeting to make presentations or discussions on the budgets. That are are presented and I'm by units of government, I'm not talking about county departments, I'm talking about either townships or. Uh, library, non-binding uh or or binding units that are uh have budgets to be reviewed by council. Okay, statute says we need to give them that opportunity, so worth the minutes to reflect that and we will have opportunity for them to speak during the regular budget. Alright, we'll move on. Uh, we have the addition of the rise peer recovery amendment uh in your package, gentlemen, or or outside of your package, you had an amendment to the rise. Uh, the three that was presented last time and that is for. Uh, the terms of payment, uh, that's the only adjustment to the amendment was the uh. Amendment one, memorandum of understanding between county and rise peer recovery. And uh the technical amendment one is under section three, which uh basically. Uh, it's going to be invoiced and paid quarterly is the the terms that would be, it'll be then. Uh, no change to the dollar amount. And Judy was was good with this and it was brought down by prosecutors. Is there a? I personally don't see a problem with with making this change. Can I have a motion for the amendment?
All motion.
Jeff moves, is there a second? Greg second, it's all fair. Yeah, seven oh, alright. Moving on to uh additional, um, the recorder has a request from the perpetuation fund, fifteen hundred dollars. eBay's funds.
Uh, as you guys know, I had to add on to my um scanning project. And I tried to give a conservative estimate, um, out of eleven eighty nine, that's where I pay. Um, the bill where however many documents we do a month, you know, a certain portion of that goes back. To Fiddler, um, I gave a conservative estimate ba- based on nine hundred dollars a month. Um, but this month I have a bill, we had the best month ever, last month we've had in forever, and I've got like eleven hundred dollar bill. So hopefully this will get me through the end of the year for just paying bills for, that's all that's left to come out of that account. I've already paid for the. Scanning project, which we saved like eight thousand dollars on, um, so this amount that I thought I was gonna have to ask for. Was gonna be a lot more, so we came out ahead on that, but um anyway, so basically it's just to pay the bills till the end of the month or end of the year.
Bills is what I because you're.
Uh, yeah, we did two hundred, yeah, we had only been doing like around a hundred ninety documents. This last month we did two hundred and thirty four. So it really jumped, so.
Your motion? Jeff moves, is there a second? Eric second, it's all better.
As a former recorder, I mean, that's a big bill, a good thing.
Yeah, we had good revenue last month, so.
Thanks, all favor. Next is a commissioner's uh courthouse, this is five thousand five hundred twenty three from UCF Development to ADA projects. This is for the handrail.
Yep, so the quote was from Sisson, it would be ADA compliant handrails down the front steps to the main entrance from where the handicap parking is on the highway. Um, one on each side, they would stop just before the bench. I did.
Yeah, I'm sorry, general work.
Yeah, so we usually have our ADA stuff in KIMCAP, um, but there's no money in there because the money we appropriated this year for was. Was for the bathroom designs, which we are moving forward with. I should have those updated soon, um, so.
Just in general.
Uh, no, I'm just saying there's no money in that line currently.
I'll make a motion, so Kim Cameron. They have a motion for the amount, Greg, for KIMCAP development is your second, second, Randy seconds. All favor? Alright. Motion carries. Parks and rent, um. Seventy seven thousand from uh park and rent to uh utilities and uh the Conservancy District. Um, so thirty two thousand is for not paying off property too.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what's going on with utility brand?
Uh, with this being open in the winter for the contractors who are staying out there, uh, our utilities have increased, plus we're also having issues with our. Rainwater getting into our meter for our sewer lift station. So we spent quite a bit of time and effort trying to find out where this is all coming in, we have had not much luck. So, and then also the increase in the sewer and water rates.
Put your revenues up because you've been.
Yes.
Having campers year round.
Yes, yeah, with uh the winter camping last year, we cleared probably around forty thousand dollars extra. Yes. Yeah, we're, we've had a couple sewer bills, it's been five thousand fifty five hundred dollars when they should be around two, maybe twenty five. So if it's heavy rain, we've had this spring, it's getting in the system somehow and we've had different companies come in and and. Camera the drains, uh, that we could get their cameras in and we're not having luck locating it. And really, the only time you can find it is when it's pouring down rain.
Have you looked in your pump pit while it right after rain?
We have. No, we have, we, I pumped them down and make sure they were, they weren't leaking in the walls. Uh, both lift stations, uh, around the lake and everything else, make sure there's no lines or anything that the lake park could be getting into. Um, it's. It's hidden somewhere.
So the thirty two, what portion of that is for rates and what portion is for your?
Pardon?
Uh, it's for infiltration research. Thirty.
Uh.
Forty five.
I mean, the forty five?
I'm sorry, it's ours forty five.
Okay, uh, that's just, I mean. The reef's coming out of other funds, besides that, that's just utilities to to pay our bills. We've been taking that out of building structures.
Okay, so forty five is just simply forty bucks you're paying in.
In utilities, the increase, because we're open seven more months, you know, we've got, you know, we've been open. You know, for the first year that we'll be open, the end of the year, so we did put that in the budget last year because we hadn't.
Right, I I understand, I just want to clarify though, that you said forty thousand more revenue than utilities or just the forty five?
That's what we clear.
Clear, okay, act, so.
Yeah, that's the profit.
Yeah. You just don't have my permission to spend the money.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that goes back into parks general.
First appearance, it looks like you're you're spending that more than taking in for the for the winner.
No, that that was the profit in in last year's, or what we figured up in.
Yeah, when Greg started looking at our budgets, he said one of the first questions they had was on, he said, do you get this part for revenue every year? Alright. Any questions for Brandon? Is there a motion on addition? Travis moves, is there a second? Max seconds? If there's a question, all favor? Seven oh, okay, uh, and then you also, or no, we're gonna share, no, we have one more, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you have a donation that means uh, oh, the, we had this last time. Uh, we set up a fund for the Eagle Scout project for the donations. Now there's a request to appropriate that money. Can I have a motion? Yeah, Greg moves, is there a second? Second, Jeff, all favor? Alright.
The guy got ball pit is complete, uh, they're getting a plaque made for it. It is down by the basketball court down toward the beach area. If anybody wants to come and play.
Next is a sheriff and this is a um appropriation again of donation, right, Sheriff?
Yes.
Five thousand six hundred sixty six for Sheriff's K nine fund.
Absolutely, yeah. So that's to cover a new, a new tech vest for K nine. And answer other training items that uh that Dallas is needing for the K nine. This is all money comes from a forfeiture fund that uh.
Sheriff's. Yeah. On the press, on the press release, you have a few. Yep, is there a motion? Motion, Travis moves, is there a second? Max, all favor? So, alright, transfers, uh, clerk has, uh, need a motion to approve resolution for all additional appropriations approved today. And Greg makes the motion, is there a second? By branding, all favor? Motion carries seven oh, transfers, uh, clerk has a transfer, uh, four thousand dollars from. A capital expense to scans ops. Hey, Alan.
So the uh, morning.
The money in the capital expense account was left over from the computer purchase that we did earlier in the year. It's not gonna get used in that account in foreseeable future. And the account it's transferred into, we recently had SBS portals scan some of our old documents. And now we're at the portion of the project where we have a online portal set up, so this money is to cover that cost and any other costs that come up related to that, such as an external hard drive for all the documents that we scanned, that way we can keep up another copy of them.
Questions for Alan? Is there a motion? Harding moves approval, is there a second? Pair of seconds. All favor. I, I. Motion, motion carries seven oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Recorder has transfer as well, and this is in perpetuation for some furniture and equipment.
Yes, I just need permission from the perpetuation, just to move money from the miscellaneous to furniture and equipment for to purchase two stools, like tossers.
Motion. Max moves and who's second is Brandon?
All right, thank you very much.
All favor. Motion carries seven oh. Parks and Rec has a transfer three thousand from campsite improvements and two thousand for electrical to recreational study plan. Go ahead, Brandon.
Six thousand dollars of the recreational study plan is going to the region fifteen is doing our five-year plan. The remaining money is going towards the engineering for the new shelter house project we discussed, and when I done the budget last year, we only had a estimate on what it's gonna cost, and we run a little short on that because he increased prices a little bit. Do we need additional five thousand to cover the cost of the engineering fees?
So the request in front of us is is for the five-year plan.
No, it's actually, well, neither one of the projects have been paid out at all yet this year.
I'm just, Judy, I'm looking for the where he's talking about, I mean, the wording's on there for the engineering fees, but
and we shelter access five hundred and so.
Yeah.
Oh, you've already paid region fifteen five thousand, so you're five thousand short on.
Yes.
You're okay, I'm sure.
Well, yeah.
Are you under contract with the engineer to do that?
Yes.
Questions for Brandon? Are you still looking at the same project that?
Great, yeah, great shelter house. It'll also have like a separate building behind it, if everything works out, that's gonna have be our restrooms in it, and then a storage area for tables and chairs and possible working kitchen. The budget all works out.
Just concerned about how warm the inside of that structure can be.
No.
With the, with the location, there's always a constant breeze, you know, blowing through there, because it's going on the the hill behind the amphitheater. So it's getting the breeze off the leg all the time. And it's gonna be open. Like the the back third is going to be paneled all the way from the floor to the to the top, and then the front half will have a open area that you can see out of where, along with the main engine in the front.
Any other questions, Brandon? Travis moves approval, is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, seconds. Yeah. All in favor? I. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Treasury requests four hundred ninety-four dollars for shredder, is any questions on that? Greg moves approvals, are second? Second, Eric. All favor. Seven oh, EMS has forty-five hundred dollars from rent to utilities. And this is because they're moving out of fire station, moving into their new building. Correct. Then you have second, and also let's take that one first, is there any question on on that? Any questions on I D, if not, I'll take a motion. Ray moves, is there a second? Travis seconds, all favor. Okay, you're where, you wanna go into item F thirty, Chris, on the twenty thousand or thirty thousand?
Yeah, so it's moving from paramedic and basic E N T into part-time. We've had some new part-time people that we've hired. You guys remember since the beginning of the year, we've had at times where we've had up to three to four full-time people off on at N L A workers comp. So the part-time money we've used has dwindled quickly. And we're just, we're out of money. And this is in in line with how I've done in the past where I moved from the other line items, and then at the end of the year, short everything up with one additional, if we need it. I think that there'll be some money in the basic E N T for the individual that we let go from the type where they were gone until we hired a new person. So again, just gonna have to see as we get to the end of the year where we're at.
Question to Chris.
Do you see where you're wanting? I mean, this is getting better, but.
How? I have anything out there now? We do not. We do not have any claims open right now for this time. I really think with the new cots, that's made a big difference. Just in myself, I can say that, you know, I worked spent a couple months ago, and I was able to move a patient with my partner who was four hundred plus pounds by ourselves. Because this individual was able to actually move to our cot, and we were able to move her to the ambulance, and there was no lifting involved because what we purchased did the lifting. Where before there would have had to been a manual lift there, and that's what was running the problem, so.
Is there a motion? I'll take Travis has the motion and I'll take Randy's second. All favor. Prosecutor has a small transfer four twenty-five for reducing subscriptions to travel for attending a conference. They're motion.
Both.
Max moves, is there a second? Second, Jeff. All favor. I, Russian carriers. Now, we also have prosecutor for professional services transfer six hundred fifty dollars. Some questions there? Do I have a motion? Travis and Jeff seconds. All favor. I, carries, help department. They have a travel request for nine, transfer nine fifty. You know, motion. Travis moves, is there a second? Okay, Eric seconds, all favor. Motion carries seven oh. Sheriff, ten thousand for correctional officer to part-time employee. And then has five hundred dollars to hardware software to technology transfer, first language eleven up there. And he's got more, we've got two more, we also have a transfer from eleven thousand from road deputy to overtime, and then transfer in general from about in sheriff's budget for law enforcement supplies to insurance radio.
Right.
Let's do the jail separately, we'll do the sheriffs.
So on the request for the correctional officers, we're just, we've just kind of ran out of money, we've got, we've got one full-time employee that that left to start his own business, we're filling in with part-time right now, we've we've had several inmates in and out of our hospitals that we have spent time with, we've been trying to split that up with on with deputies versus our jail staff, and it really depends on what level of offense these people have committed, on what we can have with them at the hospital. So with that being said, we just, we're running short on on overtime.
Sheriff, since we had a jail staff last year, the night, the night shift chair. So I guess you still try to make sure you have two on duty.
Yeah, we use, we, we have three jail staff at all times.
Right.
On night shift, if if one of them needs to go to the hospital, then we try to utilize them as much as we can, so we're not falling over time.
Or you go to two.
Then we go to two if someone is out.
That's my question.
I don't like doing that because we're short-staffed anyway, but sometimes that's all we got, so.
So you do do that some.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Any questions on jail? Item J, is there a motion?
Motion.
Max, is there a second? Travis, second, that's all there. Seven oh, all right. Sheriff, some other items here with the transfers from road deputy to overtime. So we've had some emails back and forth about some about overtime in the need to cover till you can kind of get an estimate together for hearing.
Yeah, yeah, and this is right now, I was just trying to get it through. For right now, we're coming up with something, hopefully, I mean, we could get one one major fair, but we we don't do a lot with that one, but ours extra people out, that we, you know, fair season's over with, we've had people at Ottawa Fair, we've had people at the Fourth of July Fair, spent several times, several hours down at the Zor Mosquito Fest, so we've been out and about everywhere, everybody wants to see us, so we try to cover the county as much as we can. And that being said, I mean, we've pulled the deputies, who's been sitting in the hospitals for twenty-four hours, sitting around the clock, we've been shipping out people as much as we can, and just keeping people on the road. So covering vacations, times off, stuff like that, so. I felt that we've, we've really done a fair job on watching what we're doing on overtime. We, I'm sure we'll get that session later. So.
Yeah, I agree, I think next, our next meeting, we can go into if I has any questions, we can go into that.
Absolutely.
In a deeper dive. The business needs to cover what?
Yeah.
What's already been, already worked.
Already worked, yeah.
All right, any question? Jason. So for the overtime item K, is there a motion?
Motion.
Eric moves approval, second. Travis. All favor. Motion carries seven oh, and then on the on his other transfer for long portion of supplies.
Yeah, this one was for the hardware, software maintenance. Professional services and then technology infrastructure, so I think this is where we we had to create a new line items, is that right, Judy?
You want to change? That needed to be, we purchased three new handrails.
What's that?
We had insurance deductible.
Yes, we had insurance on there, yes.
And then three new handheld.
Yes, the three new handheld radios, yes, yes.
I don't think on on this one, there's no computer tech, it's not.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Your motion?
Motion.
Max, is your second? Second. All favor. Seven oh. All right, motion for pre-approval transfers. All right, seven, all right. Greg moves. Is there a second for the pre-approval, for step pre-approval transfers? Travis seconds. All the favor. And then the same drive made the mere transfer. There, I think, Greg moves, is there a second?
Please say.
Max. All favor. And then the transfer for inventory control and tracking purpose for the human, Judy, you want to explain what that's, what you're doing there?
We're just getting the items into the correct technology bucket or name, so that we know how many computers we bought, how much was spent for monies for installation and so forth. Technology infrastructure, stuff like keyboard or cables, so.
This is all due to the big purchase that we just did for all the.
We're almost, I think we have about twenty-four thousand left to pay of that, and then we'll be complete with the inventory purchase, pay to get. This is.
Got a motion, Brian, right?
Motion.
Eric moves, is there a second? Jeff, all favor. I. Social pass is seven oh. And then the last item is business by, yeah. The coroner showed up. The coroner did show up, are you, are you wanting to address deputy now, or?
Yes, please, special committee guys. I sincerely apologize, I thought we were.
Well, we had plenty to do without you.
I thought we were gonna discuss this tomorrow, I didn't realize you guys have a general meeting before the budget here.
So we can do that, if that's, if that's what you want, though.
No, I, uh, this is just going back to the me, the additional deputy I had. I requested an additional deputy because of, you know, extra help and everything, and I actually wanted to discuss I've been trying to find a way to make extra money for the coroner's office. And we can discuss that now, we can discuss that tomorrow during my budget hearing. But I've been in in connection with Vanderburgh County Corner, Steve Locke here years ago, he made a proposal. And I think he takes about three dollars from every death certificate sold in Vanderburgh County. And that goes into a fund for the coroner's office, and I emailed Judy yesterday about creating a line item in the general fund for the coroner's office to assist with, I mean, go towards the salary or the payment for a new deputy or the salary increase I requested. And I'm just, I'm just trying to do everything I can to make, make some extra money and everything to help my department out and help you guys out as well. So I'm also proposing that.
The health department currently has a fee for
the.
Death certificate.
Coroner's training. Yeah, they, the coroner's training board, they require two dollars and fifty cents per death certificate legally. And that's gonna change here in about two or three years, it goes up by a quarter every two or three years. Natalie, I've been in discussion with her, she's already sending them a little, little extra. And I talked with her about us. and I talked with her about us garnering that extra and only sending the coroner's training board what they legally require. And from my calculations, I mean, just on average, the health department, they sell about six hundred death certificates a year. Uh, by my calculations, that could possibly bring us in about fifteen hundred dollars revenue a year for the coroner's department. But, uh, this right now, like I said, we can discuss that tomorrow, but this right now is just for the additional deputy I request.
You were going to look at what the training schedule was?
Yes, training schedule's in September. It is a two-weekend class. Um, I've already signed right up, but I talked with, uh, Lisa Barker, and she said she was going to hold a seat. So. But the coroner, the coroner's training is free. I mean, it's, it's paid for by the, the funds for the, through the health department.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanted to probably, yeah, remember, you wanted to get him trained, but then not put him on.
Yes, correct. Yeah, there's no reason to put him on this early, I mean, I want to get him trained and give him time to get his certification, everything done, he could be on the books on, in general.
Generally, in the grand scheme of things, I know we got tighter belts, but this is a very smaller quest, actually, based off what the general manager to bomb, essentially volunteer their time, very low records, and as I said in last meeting, we can't think about these guys as a, uh, in percentage rate, these I mean, we're talking, what, what's deputy coroner make?
Deputy coroner makes probably, uh, take home about seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars a year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we, then you're looking to take them essentially from two.
Fifteen percent, I've got the calculations here right now, but I mean, I'd like to see them make a little more, something to justify putting them on call whenever I go out of town, or like I say, going to Walmart, I text them and say, hey, are you guys around?
So I, I'm personally, I think this is a reasonable request. I do. So a motion is made to, uh, approve next request to add another deputy to stand. Second by Travis. All favor?
Yeah, who do you, sometimes, geez, I, I thought you were going to propose a lemonade.
Well, I've also got an idea about insurance companies. They, uh, if they request autopsy reports, I'm going to charge a couple hundred dollars per autopsy report too, so. I've been talking to Vanderburgh County, and they give me a lot of ideas, a lot of help, so.
So we need a ordinance that would establish a revenue stream for your office and
Yeah.
those, those funds of usage, those funds.
Yes, please, start at the beginning of the year, that's what I'd like to do, just to offset costs, things like that, but I'll give Judy on that.
I have, I emailed as we went, yeah, so. It was the state has specific monies that they request for death certificates that has to be set aside, the fund, and illegally pay similarly. So that's fine, they exactly.
Yeah, thank you, and you're swirled away, thank you, guys.
Any department heads have anything that can't wait till budget presentation?
John, is it okay that the Landmark speaks for the non-funding?
Yes.
All.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else from, um, council members? Next meeting is, uh, September nine. Uh, your reports are in your packet. Um, we will have signatures, uh, we can do those on break. Um, I'm going to ask that we take a we'll have to adjourn the regular meeting, then call order the budget meeting. Um, ask for a very quick break, um, let's, uh, get everybody get their papers together, and we will start at, uh, five till on that clock. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second by Harding. Will's make the motion, all favor? To adjourn, and we will convene again in about six minutes.